Good evening, we're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We are live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be broadcast live and also Saturday at 10:00 AM and the following Monday night at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Would everybody please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Evans.
Present.
Vice Chair Trowbridge.
Present.
Commissioner Goins.
Present.
Commissioner Trusdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Flegas.
Here.
And Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Thank you.
I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so that we can have a smooth meeting, and I thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, and I believe we have a workshop as well?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission Workshop Meeting of February 24th, 2011, as well as the Planning Commission meeting for the March 8th, 2011.
Thank you, and I will be abstaining on the portion of the motion with regard to the workshop. I was excused for that. We have a motion for approval. Would everyone please cast your votes?
It flashed back and then left again.
So we can post? And that is approved. Thank you. Any items from the Planning Commission staff or the applicant that wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like pulled forward for action? Staff?
Mr. Chairman, for item 17, the applicant has requested this item be obeyed to the May 10th Planning Commission meeting. Item 18, the applicant has requested this item be obeyed to the May 10th Planning Commission meeting. And items 26, 27, and 28, the applicant has requested all items, or all these items, be obeyed to the May 10th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you very much. Did anyone want to speak on these items with regard to whether or not they should be obeyed to the meetings as indicated? Seeing none, I will open and close the public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the abatement of items 17, 18, 26, 27, and 28 as requested by staff.
We have a motion on the floor to obey the items as requested. You've heard the motion, please cast your vote.
Madam Clerk, I'm unable to vote, so I'll do a voice vote as yes on that. Thank you.
And that has been approved. Before we begin the consent items, I'm assuming that some of the folks in the audience, are these folks all here for an item that was obeyed?
That would be my guess, unless they were giving away free t-shirts at the entrance.
So that item will be coming back to another day, is that correct?
May the 10th.
May the 10th. Very good. Well, we look forward to seeing you all on May the 10th, and thank you for coming down.
We're losing our audience, just... Drive safely.
You know, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Maybe during this break, I can...
Yes, yes, if you'd introduce your intern, please?
Yeah, it's just a visitor with us tonight, Chairman and Commissioners. I'd like to just introduce Erica Wyborg. She is a third-year law student at Boyd School of Law, and she's paid to work for the City Attorney's Office this semester, so I just wanted to introduce her and ask if she's got anything she'd like to say.
Just want to say that I appreciate being here today, and it's worth every penny.
Thank you, welcome. We'll see you at the Craig Kitty Party. Okay, we have no consent items on our agenda this evening, so we move to the one motion, one vote. The following items are items that may be considered in one motion and one vote. They're considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Did anyone care to have anything removed from the one motion, one vote portion of our agenda? And I know we have some condition changes, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item 13 needs to be pulled for some condition amendments.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone from our esteemed Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll read them all into the record. The first item is Agenda Item Number 6. The applicant and the owner is Charleston Rancho LLC, and it is from CD Designated Commercial to C1 Limited Commercial at 2224 West Charleston Boulevard, and that's in Ward 1. Item Number 7, RQR 40786. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor Inc., and the owner is 1701 Western Properties LLC, and that's a required review of a previously approved special use permit, SUP 3285, and it's for a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 1703 Western Avenue, and that's in Ward 3. Agenda Item Number 8 is a special use permit, SUP 40837. The applicant is G&amp;N LLC, and the owner is Dario Pini, P-I-N-I, for a proposed 8,763-square-foot tavern limited establishment at 707 Fremont Street, C2 General Commercial Zone, and that is in Ward 5. Agenda Item Number 9, SUP 40899. The applicant is Body Spa, and the owner is MICA 68 Holding LLC, and it is for a 661-square-foot massage establishment with an existing 20,189-square-foot spa facility with waivers of the distance separation requirements to allow 130 feet from a massage establishment where 1,000 feet is required and no distance separation from a residential use where 400 feet is required. And that is at 8751 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite 150 and 160, and that's C1, and that is in Ward 2. Item Number 10 is Special Use Permit 41030. The applicant and the owner is Great Wash Park LLC, and that is for a proposed 2,946-square-foot beer/wine cooler on-sale establishment with a waiver to allow 141-foot distance separation from a city park where 400 feet is required at 410 South Rampart Boulevard, Suite 120, and that is C2 General Commercial in Ward 2. Agenda Item Number 11, Special Use Permit 41080. The applicant is Czech City, the owner is Weingarten Nostat Inc., and it's to add a jewelry store (Class III Use) to an existing financial institution specified at 6820 West Charleston Boulevard, and that's C1 Limited Commercial, and that is in Ward 1. Agenda Item Number 12 is Site Development Review 41023. The applicant and the owner is the Clark County Legal Services Program, and it is a major amendment to an approved Site Development Plan Review, SDR 39457, for a four-story, 49-foot-tall parking garage where a three-story, 33-foot-tall parking garage was approved at the southwest corner of Gas Avenue and 8th Street. And that's C1, and that is in Ward 3. And I believe we've pulled Agenda Item Number 13 off of the one motion, one vote, so those are the public hearing, or rather, the one motion, one vote. The staff's recommending approval for all of them. Is there anyone that is here to speak for or against any of these items? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On item number 7, I'd like to know if they're keeping that nice. And I see that the same outfit has got on item on number 25, that they want to add razor wire and stuff in. And I don't want that place looking like an urban prison down there, so I don't know how they're going to do it. But we had problems with this sign once before. They had a bunch of graffiti on it, and then it looked like crap a couple of years ago, and I just wondered what it looks like now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on these items, on the one motion, one vote, one motion, one vote portion of the agenda? Ms. Nave?
Thank you, Chairman. Am I on?
I believe so.
Great. Alyssa Nave for the record, representing Legal Acre Center of Southern Nevada. We just want to say thank you for the recommendation of approval and that we are fully fine with all of the compliance recommendations.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe we can close the...
If I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say for the record that I do pro bono work for Nevada Legal Systems as a surrogate for children with special needs in schools. I'm not compensated in any way, so I do feel that I can vote on this item. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. If there's no further discussion on these items, the staff again is recommending approval. Apparently, the applicants are in agreement with all the standard conditions and the conditions stated, and so I think we'd be seeking a motion.
I'm willing to make a motion, but I would like to comment on item number 9. It is to grant a special use permit for a massage establishment. This really is an insignificant activity within a very large, existing beauty shop. The massage activities are only going to consume 3% of the floor space of the existing facility. Additionally, it's, the entire area is blocked from view from the residential area of the neighbors. In addition, item number 10 is for a license for beer/wine cooler sale that happens to be adjacent to a city park. I just would go, want to mention that the tavern really is in a, it's an improvement to the Tribally Village at Queen Ridge there, and the park that it's referencing is the Angel Park Golf Course, which in and of itself includes a restaurant with their liquor license. So with that having been said, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of items 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11, as subject to all conditions as presented by staff. And 12, of course.
Very good. We have a motion for approval for Agenda Items Number 6 through 12. Please cast your vote. And that has been approved.
Mr. Chairman, items number 7, 9, 10, 12, and 13 are final action in the absence of appeal. Items number 6, 8, and 11 will go forward to the May 18th City Council meeting.
Thank you very much. We now go to Agenda Item Number 13, which was pulled from the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. It is, I'll read it into the record, Site Development Review 41035. The applicant is Ed Bozarth Chevrolet, owner at 5501 Drexel LLC, and it's a major amendment to an approved Site Development Plan Review, SD 0031-97, for proposed 7,300-square-foot automobile showroom addition to an existing motor vehicle sales new facility at 5501 Drexel Road, and that's in C2 in Ward 6. The staff is recommending approval. Mr. Rankin or Mr. Geckie, can you...
We'd like to clarify on the one motion, one vote, that item number 6 was going to the May 4th City Council meeting.
Madam Clerk, can we make that a correction?
Yes.
Thank you. And Agenda Number 13, please?
Mr. Chairman, this request is to expand an existing vehicle showroom by enclosing a covered external walkway adjacent to the showroom. Staff is recommending approval of the request with conditions, as the changes to the site meet Title 19 requirements, and it will have little or no impact on the surrounding properties. If denied, the site will remain as it is. Please note that there is an additional letter of protest for this item since publication.
Thank you very much. And this is the applicant?
Yes, it is. Richard Youngblood, 40, 45, Dean Martin Drive. And we agree with all conditions except for condition number 13 regarding the drainage plan and technical drainage study. We spoke with Lucian on the 7th about removing that condition since we are not changing any of the grading or any roof lines on the property. We wish to have that condition removed.
Thank you. Did Public Works want to comment on that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Like you said, we talked and concur with just completely deleting condition 13.
Very well, thank you very much. This too was advertised as a public hearing. Is there anyone in the members of the public that wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Seeing none, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you very much.
In regards to item number 13, Site Development Review 41035, make a motion to approve, subject to all staff conditions, with the deletion of condition number 13.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor. You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion has been approved.
And thank you.
And that item is final action in the absence of an appeal.
Thank you. We now go forward to the public hearing items on our agenda, and those begin with Agenda Item Number 14, and they go through 16. And I will read them into the record. 14 is ZON 40490. The applicant and the owner is the Mary Bartssis 19 LLC, and that's an application from R4 High Density Residential to a change to PR Professional Office and Parking at 528 East Oaky Boulevard, and that's in Ward 3. The staff is recommending approval. Agenda Item Number 15 is Variants 40491, and that's to allow three parking spaces where six are required. The staff is recommending denial of that. Agenda Item Number 16, Site Development Review 40492, and that's for the conversion of a 1,632-square-foot residential duplex to an office other than listed with waivers to allow no perimeter landscape buffers along the north and east perimeters where 15 feet is required, and along the south and west perimeters where eight feet is required. Staff's recommending denial of that. Staff, can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting the conversion of a residential property for commercial use. The property is currently zoned high-density residential, but the existing land use designation of the site is commercial. As the rezoning request will bring the zoning into conformance with the general plan and will be compatible with the surrounding commercial zoning, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request. However, the site, as proposed, will have minimal landscaping and cannot accommodate the parking required by the proposed office use. A revised landscape plan was submitted on April 11th and is included in your updates. It depicts additional landscaping on the north side of the existing structure that will meet the, it will meet the planting material requirements for the north buffer area, but is not sufficient to meet the minimum buffer width requirement along the entire perimeter, nor is any additional landscaping being provided along the remaining perimeters. Staff is recommending denial of the variants for parking and the Site Development Plan Review, as the site does not meet the minimum requirements of Title 19 for landscape materials and buffer requirements. In addition, the applicant has presented no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance pursuant to Title 19, 18, 070 that would substantiate the requested variants. If approved, condition of approval number 3 of SDR 40492 should be amended to read. All development shall be in conformance with the site plan, date stamped 2911. The landscape plan, date stamped 4/11/11, and building elevations, date stamped 12/23/10, except as amended by conditions herein.
Thank you very much. Mr. Salt?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Arnold Salt, and 2701 Alta Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89107, representing Mary Bartssis Enterprises and Mary Bartssis Trust. And this is a situation where this has been used over the years as an office, been retained by the owners of the trust to go through their portfolio and bring the buildings and the properties that they have in conformance with planning codes. I've met extensively with staff, with building department staff. There is one correction that I have that I've been meeting with the Department of Building Safety on, is the building is 1,490 square feet. And we've, we want to upgrade the building in terms of its paint, we want to add as much landscape as we can, and we're requesting, agree with staff's recommendations. And we've also, I've also met with neighbors that are there and have met extensively with a neighbor directly to the west of us, and have developed a cross-access, and assigned cross-access access parking agreement, so that the parking's access in the shared driveway is cleaned up, and would appreciate your consideration of our request.
Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this matter? Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Could we see the landscaping planned on that, please? That's just not enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else close the public hearing? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm going to abstain on this item, as much as I'd like to vote on it, but I have a matter pending with Mr. Stark in another jurisdiction that hasn't been resolved.
Thank you.
A question, you say you are working on the joint access agreement for the parking, or you haven't?
We signed it with the owner and executed and notarized it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I took an opportunity to, I pass that every day, and it is a bit of a challenge, it's an older building. I'm pleased that you were able to put some landscaping in there. I know it's difficult because of the nature of the building and the way it's sited, but I'm pleased that you're putting money into it, and I'm assuming that you'll either lease it or sell it. And I know the staff recommends denial of the parking because it doesn't meet the standards, but it looks like you may have resolved that. And if I'm not mistaken, we're going to get a couple of trees and a planter out of that, is that correct?
That's correct. And we're going to paint the building and put some appropriate signage on it, and the trust is not going to sell the building. I don't think they've sold a parcel in a long time, so they want to keep it and fix it up and have it as a bona fide professional office use.
Will the large canary date palm remain?
Oh, I thought you were talking about the birds.
Well, that was my next question.
Yes, yes.
Good.
There are no birds on the facility.
But the palm tree will remain?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can you have him pass that easement forward here? I want to make sure it's a perpetual easement before we go ahead and accept that.
Let me make sure this is one that's signed. I need to provide, this is not the signed copy, I need to provide one that's signed, I thought it was.
So is it conceivable that I can eat the Lovitz frozen custard over there?
Yes.
Okay.
One of my favorite spots. And I apologize, that's not the signed one, but I could be glad to get you a copy of the signed agreement.
Commissioners, any comment or motion on this matter?
I just want to make a comment about this area, because I do, I have a doctor that I frequent over, not far from there, and anything that you can do to improve this property is going to improve the safety of the entire area. I'm to the point where I'm almost afraid to get out of the car over there, so my motto is, if you make it bigger and brighter and nicer and everything, it's going to do nothing but improve the neighbors' property values, as well as the safety of the citizens that live in the surrounding area, as well as the people that work in the surrounding area. So I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say something.
Question, City Attorney, question?
Yeah, I do have a question for staff. Is there, I'm not quite understanding where the parking is going to be accommodated on the shared access agreement. If that building is parking, has a parking surplus or not?
Mr. Chairman, through you, without having the chance to review that document and reviewing the sites in question, I can't give you for sure a certain answer on whether or not they have extra parking or not.
See, my concern is if we agree to a 50% reduction in parking on this site, and the other one's already 50% deficient, what do we have at the end of the day?
It's a driveway access agreement. It's not a shared parking agreement, it's a driveway access.
Okay, so it's only shared access?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Public Works?
Yes, sir.
If I may, through you, we have a condition number 18, which requires that they provide proof of a joint access agreement prior to occupancy of the building, so our concern there was that there's a shared driveway, two parcels are sharing that driveway, and they need to provide proof that they can both access through that driveway.
So that's a condition of approval?
It's a condition number 18.
On which item?
On the SDR.
On the SDR, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, I believe that I submitted the signed thing to the, to our planner, to Mike Howe. I believe he has the signed one, I just don't have it in my file.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's insufficient as it reads anyway, so they're going to have to get something different to us before the City Council meeting on this. I can go ahead and tell the applicant now, if you like, on the record, or I can, I can have him call me tomorrow or the next day.
But the condition is a condition for approval, so that has to be satisfied before it actually would be approved at City Council, or allowed for the change to approve.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, our condition requires it be provided prior to occupancy of the site, so...
Right, okay. Thank you very much. Any further comments, anyone?
It sounds like there's no further discussion, I'm ready to make a motion. In regards to item number 14, the zoning 40, 490, make a recommendation for approval.
We have a motion for approval for the zone change, Agenda Item Number 14. Please cast your vote. Agenda Item Number 15?
In regards to item number 15, Variants 40, 491, make a recommendation for approval with the understanding that the condition will address the current deficiency in the...
That may be on the SDR.
Is there language in there that addresses the requirement for one handicap parking space?
I believe...
Public Works?
Mr. Chairman, through you, we do have a condition that does require a van-accessible handicap parking space.
Thank you. Then my motion stands for approval on item 15.
Motion for approval on Agenda Item Number 15. Motion for approval on agenda item number 15. And that has been approved. Agenda item number 16?
In regards to item number 16, there was a stated correction to the square footage of the duplex. Is it 1490 rather than the as advertised 1632?
That's correct.
Is correct. Does that make the text to the item deficient, or is it satisfactory because it's less?
The building department had a different interpretation of the square footage of the building. Our number is based upon the gross square footage of the building, and it is the actual gross square footage of the building. I think it would be better to approve it at the larger size. If building safety determines that it's a smaller building than that, then there's no issue.
Very good, I understand. And while I do have some concern with the deficiencies in landscaping, I do realize that sometimes you just have to accept. If that's all you can get, that's all you can get. So with that understanding, in regards to item number 16?
I think we have a, condition three was an issue. Was that the Public Works?
No.
Okay.
So in regards to item number 16, Site Development Review 40492, make a recommendation for approval. Subject to all staff conditions.
And that's with the amended conditions as a staff red, correct?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that has been approved.
And these items will go forward to city council on May the 18th.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, agenda items number 17 and 18 were obeyed, so that brings us to agenda items number 19, 20, and 21, which are all related. 19 is GPA 40839, and the applicant is Drive Time Car Sales Company, LLC. The owner is Linda Lee Ward Revocable Living Trust, and that is an action to, for the general plan from Public Facilities to GC, General Commercial, at 2301 McLeod Street, and that's in Ward 3. The staff is recommending approval. Agenda item number 20, Special Use Permit 41115 for proposed auto repair garage major. The staff is recommending approval on that. And agenda item number 21, Site Development Review 41114, and that is a major amendment to a previously approved Site Development Plan Review for proposed auto repair garage major within an existing 400 square foot building, and the staff is recommending approval of that as well. Staff, can you give us a report on these items, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The general commercial category, as requested, is consistent with the existing C2 zoning. The proposed use complies with Title 19 minimum special use requirements and can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the existing and surrounding land uses. The applicant is proposing site improvements that will reduce the impact of the residential neighborhood to the north. The existing 60-foot light poles will be replaced with 30-foot light poles that meet Title 19 requirements. The submitted landscape plan depicts a new landscape buffer along the north perimeter which abuts the single-family residence with nine 24-inch box trees and 32 5-gallon shrubs. No buffer was previously provided or required at this location upon the original approval. Upgrades to the landscape buffers along McLeod Drive will include 13 24-inch box trees and 51 5-gallon shrubs. Previously, only pine trees at eight feet on center were provided. The proposed parking lot landscaping will consist of a 24-inch box tree and five 4-gallon, five, four, 5-gallon shrubs in each parking lot island, where 5-gallon shrubs were originally approved. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication. Staff does recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Gentlemen, do you care to state your position here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Darren Dorsey, the law firm of Snell &amp; Wilmer, 3883 Howard Hughes Parkway, Las Vegas, 89169. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Drive Time. To my right is Randy Barnes of RBA Architects. He's the architect on the project. Just as a little way of background, this, the parcel and the issues before you tonight are pertinent issues to some previous approvals that took place earlier this year for a Drive Times used car dealership that will go on East Sahara. The parcels that issue tonight will serve as the body shop and the maintenance facility for that, for that used car facility. Just to, and just to let you guys know, we've also, we've closed on the previous parcels that were approved and are ready to possibly open in August of this year. And if approved tonight and going forward with the city council, we hope to, with the body shop as well, and that will open at the same time in August of this year. We've worked with staff, and I think in the report, a lot of information with regards to the general plan amendment. Previously, this was designated as a public use. For some reason, in the chain of custody of this, it was not transferred over to C2, which is basically, that's the use in the area. That's what the general plan amendment is for, and the special use permit and the design review with some of the features that staff noted in their report. We would like to note a couple of things in working with staff. The landscape, there are some, we made some accommodations to accommodate neighborhoods on the north. We've added an additional buffer of trees. In addition to, there's a concrete wall to the north. Like they said, we're going to remove, lower the 60-foot light poles down to 30 and have those up to city code now, have those pointed downward to create some additional buffer for the neighborhood there. Also placing a lot of landscape and shrillage along McLeod. Those pine trees that were noted by staff, those are actually, were eliminated previously. They don't exist there, and if you've seen in any of the pictures in your reports, there's just a chain-linked fence. We're going to go ahead and add the landscape plan to put that along McLeod there. And another item is we've made it so that anybody leaving the facility is not going to be going northbound on McLeod, so there will not be test drives or anything associated with this facility heading into the neighborhood, will be exiting out onto Sahara Avenue. Our client feels confident and ready that they can open this year, and they've put a couple of million dollars into this facility, and have appreciated working with staff, and we seek your approval.
Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone care to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. If we're ever going to get this place cleaned up, now's the time we're going to have it done. Now, the applicant on that dealership, they're going to slop $101.5 million worth of paint on that thing, and they're going to clean that thing up. But it looks to me that this is landscape deficient, what I'm looking at right now. How big are those trees? Are we talking about little 15-foot trees? Are we talking about some real trees? They don't want to put in the big trees because they're afraid the bird's going to get up there and mess up their cars and that. I understand their problem, but we have a problem too. And like I say, I mean, they were supposed to have pine trees in there, you know, over the years, they disappeared or whatever. They never maintained them. Now is the time to put the feet to the fire and get this thing right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Did you want to respond, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that in working with staff, we have put together and made some significant upgrades to the landscaping there to deal with a lot of the issues for buffering and aesthetic use in the area. I would also, I apologize, would also like to represent to the commission tonight, just for confusion purposes, in our justification letter that went, for the hours of operation, the body shop that this is involved is not a public body shop. This is not for return vehicles. This is for pre-sale servicing of the vehicles. I spoke with staff this morning and let them to clear up that possible confusion. We're seeking that the hours of operation for the body shop, which is in the rear, the parcel here tonight, be open, available for 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Now, the reason we're asking for that is it's not public, there's not going to be people coming in, there's not for reservice of vehicles because this is a used car dealership. The reason, the dealership, I believe, is staying, opening at 8:30 to 8:30 and 10, 8:30 to 10, I believe, on some other days. And the 6 to 6 would be Monday through Saturday, closed on Sundays. I just wanted to make that representation to the commission tonight because in speaking with staff, I wanted to clarify that.
Maybe the staff can clarify. Do we have a condition of hours of operation that is contrary to?
Actually, we don't have, sorry, Mr. Chairman, there are no hours of operation conditions on this application.
Thank you very much. Members of the commission?
I would, if I may, body shops can be a noisy area, and when I originally read the item, it mentioned nothing, but it talked about the hours of operation of the, you know, from 10:00 a.m. until 8:30 p.m., and now you're saying it's 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the body shop operation, different than the car lot. I would like to see that 6 to 6 being a condition.
And we can certainly add that with your motion?
Someplace within the three items.
Mr. Chairman, to the applicant or staff, you indicated that the customers are going to exit out onto Sahara. I don't, in the plan, this is before me, and maybe there's been one revision, I don't see any access points to the adjacent, to the dealership itself. So is all the access on McLeod, is that where it circulates? Or if this is part of the dealership, isn't there some cross-drives between the dealership itself?
And I just want, for purposes of how the cars access the body shop, is that what you're asking, Commissioner?
Well, I mean, you indicated it's part of the dealership, so I was just looking to see, are they together, are they separate operations, or?
They're together. They're solely together. The body shop is to support the dealership itself. So all of that, will all the body shop and the pre-sales work is going to put inventory out on the lot itself?
But, but the way this looks, it looks like the only access points are going back out to the public street and into the body shop rather than through some cross-drive that's on-site, which if it was, I was trying to see if that's part of the dealership, wouldn't there be some cross-access on-site?
And they do plan to add that within the, closer to Sahara, where the dealership cars are accessed through the other parcels to access the body shop. So where that the only way to get back there is actually going to be, that's the intention of the project, is to have people go through the car lot, which are the adjacent parcels.
And Mr. Chairman, through you, just to answer that question, currently, the site as it exists has access to the parcel to the east internally, where you see those, the planter box located at the, on the eastern edge. The aerial we have up on our screen, which you can't see, there currently exists access between those two parcels, and the three of those parking spaces don't actually exist.
Right, but the plan before us shows that access going away.
The current plan, yes, does show the access going away.
So how do we condition this to make sure that access remains?
We can add a condition that access to the parcel to the east shall be provided.
And you're comfortable with that condition? Should that be the motion?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay.
Quick point of clarification, sir. Sir, quick point of clarification. The hours of operation for the body shop, I believe you said 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. At 6:00 a.m., will they be pounding on cars?
No, and in doing that, the bay doors for the body shop are going to be closed as a majority of the time. If they're, I'd be happy to make some other condition with staff that the bay doors, any of the work that'd be going internally, that can't be done, the doors can't be opened before 8:00 a.m. or something like that. They're just trying to get some body work done and some pre-sales work to get cars out on the lot, if that means changing oil, doing those kinds of things for the inventory.
Thank you. And I, just as a matter of disclosure, I took the opportunity to meet with Mr. Tomlinson, who essentially walked me through everything that you have discussed, with the exception of the body shop and the hours of operation.
Is that five days a week or six days a week?
Six days a week. Closed on Sundays.
All right.
And I'm, I appreciate all the landscaping that you put in because it appears that you're providing a buffer between the business and the residences that are immediately, I think, north of the site. And, you know, I think we all would agree, it's, all those vacant lots down there are creating a real hole in our community, so pleased to see an investment there. But with that clarification about the body shop, it gives me a level of comfort because I wouldn't want to live next to something that would be pounding at 6:00 a.m. So if you can assure me that that's not the case, then I certainly would be more comfortable with voting for approval. So I think we're ready for a motion.
With staff's recommendation for the wording and the placement of the additional...
Yes, as you get to those, I have a condition ready for the site plan review and for the special use permit.
No other questions, then I'll make a motion regarding item number 19, General Plan Amendment 40839, make a motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval. Please cast your vote.
In regards to item number 20, Special Use Permit 41115, make a motion for approval. Subject to staff conditions with the addition of the condition as follows.
Hours of operation shall be Monday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
With the addition of that condition, the motion is for approval.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. And that has passed. And agenda item number 21, the Site Development Review.
In regards to item number 21, Site Development Review 41114, make a motion for approval. Subject to all staff conditions with the addition of a...
A revised site plan shall be submitted to the Planning Department showing access to parcel number 16201801021.
Couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you. With that addition, motions for approval.
We have a motion for approval with an amended or additional condition, as eloquently stated in the record and conferred and agreed upon by the esteemed vice chairman, so please cast your vote. And that too is approved.
Mr. Chairman, these items will go forward to city council on May the 18th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Before we go any further, I've been informed by two of the commissioners that we have, Boy Scout Troop 535 from the Tulley Springs area and Ward 6 present with us this evening, and they're here for citizenship and community awareness, and we'd like to recognize them. I believe they're in the back of the room, and perhaps our camera crew can get these folks, and would you please stand? Thank you very much. And Planning Director, can you explain a little bit about what the Planning Commission does?
Just as long as you don't make me repeat the scout oath. The Planning Commission is authorized by Nevada revised statutes relative to a number of activities. First of all, relative to land use activities, both general plan amendments, rezonings, site plans, variances, special use permits. In addition, they are also authorized by Nevada revised statutes as being the keepers of the city's master plan and are responsible for reviewing that and adopting the city's master plan.
Did you understand, Mr. Peabody? Thank you. Thank you very much for coming down today. Appreciate your, appreciate your spending time with us. Thank you. We move on to agenda item number 22, I believe, and related item number 23. 22 is zoning 40999. 22 is zoning 40999. The applicant and the owner is Hua Chenquinn, and that is an application for a zone change from residential estates RE to C1 Limited Commercial. And that's at the southwest corner of Owens Avenue and Inn Street, and that is in Ward 5. And then related item is the site development review 40998. And that is for a parking lot with waivers to allow no perimeter landscape buffer along the west perimeter where eight feet is required, and a five-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the north and east perimeters where 15 feet is required. And the staff is recommending denial of that. Staff, can we get a report on these items, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site consists of two parcels. Both parcels are subject to the rezoning request, while the site development plan review applies to only a portion of the northern parcel. The rezoning request will bring the zoning into conformance with the existing commercial land use designation, and will be compatible with the surrounding commercial zoning, and staff is recommending approval. The parking lot as proposed does not comply with the minimum Title 19 requirements regarding perimeter landscaping and parking lot screening. While staff can support the waiver requests along the west perimeter, as the parking lot will provide additional spaces for the existing convenience store, the reduction of the landscape buffer along the public right of way is not supported, and staff is recommending denial of this request. If these items are denied, the parking lot improvements would have to be removed. Please note that there are additional letters of protest for this item since publication.
Thank you very much. The applicant, can you identify yourself, your name and address for the record?
Yes, good evening, Vincent Jin, A18 South Casino Center. This is the applicant, Hua Chenjin, who is at 2199 Natalie Avenue.
Thank you very much. Would you please state your case in this manner?
Yes, well, Your Honor, or Chairman, Chairman, this is the existing land where it is, if I may, on the map that we have, it's the same as the one up there. However, we have a landscape plan, which is, yes, it is. I am the sun, yes. The landscape plan, we have a plan to where there's going to be bushes and trees placed in the landscaping. There is a plan to put a Texas sage shrubs, as well as the blue Mexican palm, as well as a acacia tree. And those are going to act as a buffer between the street to the parking lot. And it is my understanding that the Texas sage, once it's grown in, it'll more or less become a hedge that will buffer the street from the parking lot. The parking lot was paved primarily because when the existing business was there, people were driving through that portion of the parking lot to cut through, to either avoid the stoplight at the, at the corner, and as they were going through, because it used to only be dirt and gravel, because it went through, it was kicking up a lot of dirt and debris. My parents at the time thought it would be more prudent to pave it, therefore to eliminate the dust population, oh, dust pollution at the time.
Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing, anyone wish to speak, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. The applicant is talking about the, the trees and all of that, but still, still, what I read on the agenda, no perimeter landscape buffer along the west, and they're two-thirds deficient along the east. And that just plain is not acceptable. If we're going to have rules and regulations in this, in this city, people are going to have to, to abide with them. That's all we ever get before this commission, is just a constant parade of people asking for waivers. So I mean, I've seen my...
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to briefly say that I agree with Mr. Farlow, there is more than enough room to put the, the clear amount of landscape, if not excess amount of landscape. And so you brought up a valid point, Mr. Farlow, thank you.
Let me ask this, how can we get additional landscaping, particularly along the west side? Is that something that's been contemplated, or, I wasn't real clear why we couldn't get...
On the west side?
On the east.
On the east, I'm sorry, the east side.
Okay. On the east side, the pictures of where they are right now, the issue though is, in order to get more landscaping space, it would require to tear up the asphalt, and...
But can you not put in a species of tree that would fit within there?
We could prob, yes, and that is the species of trees that we were talking, was that acacia tree and that blue Mexican palm that would fill in that area, the existing area as it is.
Mr. Rankin, I, I think, you throw some numbers out here, if you would, please. My notes are at home, so...
The requirement is to have 15 feet of perimeter landscaping. The applicant is providing, I believe, five feet, so...
Eight feet perhaps would be...
And eight feet is what we require in the interior of a site. Eight feet would allow for a tree to grow much bigger and larger and have a larger tree canopy than, than five feet does. They thrive much better in that, that space. And then 15 is the optimal size for a buffer.
Well, and, and are you working with a landscape architect at all?
We, we are, we do have.
Okay, because the blue, the blue Mexican fan palm, it'll be the next millennia before that reaches a height as tall as me.
Okay.
They grow incredibly slowly. So, you know, they're very pretty, but I can't wait that long.
Okay.
And, and I'm wondering if, you know, if we can't get a commitment here for additional, additional landscaping. Any suggestions from my fellow commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if I could jump right in, let me just back up a little bit and a little history on, on what's happened along the Martin Luther King corridor. If you haven't been down there, you probably should go down and look. It looks sort of like a transformation when you come down Martin Luther King. There's been a little over $10 million put into widening Martin Luther King, putting in the landscape zones down the middle of the boulevard. And when you get to Owens and Martin Luther King, in contrast, in Ward 5, that's just like being at Sahara and Las Vegas Boulevard out, out in the, out in the county. This is a major intersection here, and each business is conforming to Title 19. That's the issue here. The applicant had a residential piece of property, which they paved without even consulting with the city to see if you could, number one, pave a parking lot on a residential estate zoned parcel. That, that you cannot do. So while I understand you're going to have to tear up the asphalt, what you should have done prior to paving was to contact the city to see what the code was. Next, you go ahead and pave it, and then you put in the landscape buffer at five feet. And if you look east down Owens, all the way down to H Street, you will see every business, and you can see it in this photo of, of number 22-23, that the next little shopping center has the 15-foot landscape buffer in. It's very important that you're the first business on the block, when you turn down the street, you have to be in compliance. So there's no wiggle room for me to allow you to have any variance as a waiver. You're going to have to comply with the code, you're going to have to put in the proper shrubbery, you're going to have to put in the 15-foot buffer, even if that means you have to come and tear up a bit of the, a bit of the parking lot. And, and I do agree with Mr. Farlow, we have these rules and regulations in place for business owners to follow them. And in order for us to have a aesthetically pleasing district, especially in this area that has a traffic count, a very high traffic count on a daily basis, you have to comply with the code. So I think you caused this hardship on yourself, and I think it has to be corrected.
Thank you. I would, I, I agree with the sentiments of the commissioner, however, the, the code requires 15 feet, and I think eight feet would be sufficient if you were to put eight feet landscape buffer on both the north and the east side.
But, but Commissioner, again, you, you're now, in a sense, compromising the integrity of the way the, the aesthetics looks as you move east down the block. You're going to have eight foot here, as soon as you cross Inn Street, everything going east down to H Street's going to be 15 feet. Why should we allow this relief for one applicant, and then you're going to have other applicants that have complied with the code, have, have put in the proper landscaping, have gone that extra mile to comply with the Title 19? And, and that's the issue here. We're giving people too many breaks, giving them too many breaks. I, I wholeheartedly believe at this intersection, it must comply with Title 19.
Well, I, I still would think that eight feet would be sufficient, but I'll defer to you. I mean, we, I spent 10 years giving people breaks, so I'm just trying to be reasonable so we have a business that can operate.
And we, we could, if the commission is, except, if they would be accepting of the eight feet, we can, we will do what we need to do to make the eight feet.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Good.
I'm looking at the pictures here, and the applicant paved this, whether they did it right or wrong, that, that's really staff would, would only know. But there's no onsite curb, these are just hammered down bumper blocks to, this is a And, and the reality is, you've got 65 feet between parking stalls. So you have plenty of room to restripe this lot, you have plenty of room to have them come along and cut the asphalt. This is not, we're not asking you to spend, you know, $50,000, $100,000, we're asking you to do the right thing, just like every other church that has come in here. And I've always been here saying that the churches in, in West Las Vegas are leading the community. The businesses are there, need to be leading the community. You don't see the businesses along the city park across the street. They've done, they've exceeded the required landscape to make, make West Las Vegas an appropriate community. And with the amount of money spent along this corridor, you've been there a long time, you've owned these properties, you've had every break in time for various reasons to delay this or to avoid this. I'm not going to support the idea of eight feet when there's really no reason you can't provide what's required. You're not going to lose parking because of it, you're not going to lose access, it's just, you're going to follow the rules and make it a nicer intersection. I, I think that's, that's the most appropriate thing we can do here with everything that's being invested in that community by everyone else.
Thank you very much. Any other commissioners have any comments? Anything? We're ready for a motion, perhaps?
Mr. Chairman, for item 22, ZON40999, I will follow staff's recommendation for approval.
We have a motion for approval on agenda item number 22, please cast your vote. And that is approved, agenda item number 23?
On item 23, I move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Can I make a suggestion before we vote on the motion?
Well, Commissioner, I'll, I'll listen to your suggestion, but, and I think I was relatively conservative on, on the amount that was used to, to upgrade Martin Luther King. But I think this is, speaks volumes to what...
And I, and I would agree with you. My suggestion was, i-if you were so inclined for a motion for approval with the condition that they provide the 15-foot landscape that you, that you're requesting.
No, sir. I want full compliance with Title 19.
That's what I'm saying.
This is a major gateway in, into West Las Vegas, with, with the pylons and all of the upgrades on there. It's imperative that this corner be fully compliant with Title 19.
And, and that's my suggestion, that you could have a motion that requires them, if approved, to meet the conditions that you're stating.
I, let me defer to staff to see if that gets me to full compliance of Title 19.
It would not, there are multiple waivers requested with this, so we would have, you could approve it with no waivers is, is an option.
And I just want to say for the rec, I'm sorry.
I, I'd rather go back and start from the beginning and, and come in with a plan that complies to Title 19. I think the applicant can surely contact the city, sit down with, with the city, and get a plan that meets every bit of Title 19.
Okay. Commissioner Quinn, you had a comment before we make...
I'm sorry, I interrupted. I just want to say that for myself personally, I want to see the landscape drawings, I want to see it exactly how it's going to look before I just vote on something that they say they're going to do. Not that I don't trust you, but I, I just want to be able to see it, so I agree with...
We have a motion, I think, for denial, is that correct, Mr., or Commissioner Goins, on agenda item number 23?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion for denial, please cast your vote. And the motion for denial has passed.
And these items will go forward to city council on May the 18th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on to agenda item number 24, the variance 40797. The applicant and the owner is Margarita Ojeda, to allow a six-foot corner yard, side yard setback where 15 feet is required for a proposed accessory structure, class two, and to allow three accessory structures with a total building area of 1,048 square feet, where 1,011 square feet is the maximum allowed, at 5313 Patricia Avenue. And that's residential estates RE zone, and that is in Ward 6. The staff is recommending denial. Staff, can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed accessory structure could be designed and cited to comply with all provisions of Title 1908. As the applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances pursuant to Title 1918070 that would substantiate this request, staff is recommending denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for this item since publication.
Thank you very much. Applicant, would you care to state your name and address for the record and...
Yeah, my name is Larry Sanchez, 7844 Sorrento Brook Street. I'm the structural engineer, designer for the proposed detached garage. Here, to my right, we have the homeowner, Margarita. And the reason why we're here, Commission, is to get approval for the, for the setback. They just recently had a new addition to their family, and they have some beautiful plans that they like to do to their, their parcel. If you can tell on the overhead, you have two existing structures that were illegal or non-permitted. On a previous permit, they, they got the permit to legalize those structures. So those structures are, are not, I repeat, are not part of this variance package. The only thing that they would like to do is to locate the detached garage six feet from, I believe it would be the, the east of Bradley Street. And this, one of the specific reasons why they need it there is because to the east of that garage, they can't move it any further, because they'd like to put a swimming pool there in the future, which would only allow them to move the garage towards the back. With the new added addition, they just had a baby girl, they feel more secure to have the garage located, I guess, a little bit, a little bit south of the rear of the existing house, as is. Not to mention, everything will match, the detached garage will match the existing conditions of the structure, the house itself. And again, they, they're here to ask for approval for that. They also provided letters here for the record. They also provided letters here for the record. I just put it all over. These four letters designate the different property owners that surround, completely surround, their parcel, and they are in approval, if you will, of putting the detached garage at that specific location.
Okay, and those are all the surrounding property owners?
Correct.
If you could please pass them forward to the clerk, and she'll enter them into the record, I believe. So, in a nutshell, you're indicating that you have the concurrence of your surrounding neighbors, and you provided an explanation as to why they want to do what they want to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's, one of the things is, staff recommended to move it way towards the back. And they were against that. The only reason why is because, again, they just had a newborn baby, and it would be so far back, the mother of the child would have to, with groceries and things, it just, it would just, I don't want to say it's like a mile away from the house, but it's just a great distance. This is close to half an acre, and it's, for them, it would be kind of too much. And also, the security issue, it'd be a little bit more tangible for them to be closer to their residence, to the rear of the residence, as opposed to way towards that back alley. And they didn't want to kind of embarge in that back alley, if you will. Access to the detached garage would not be through Bradley. It would be through the semicircle driveway, if you will, existing driveway, which would kind of lead to the front of the house. So, again, they're not trying to create any hardship at all. They're just, they're just looking for the setback variance.
Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow. So they got caught by code here. On the overhead that I'm looking at, the accessory structure that is on the left side there, how far is that away from the lot, from the edge of the lot? It looks like it's closer to the edge of the lot than the actual house. Is that true or not?
I'll allow staff. Do you have an answer to that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The, that accessory structure is noted as being three feet from the property line, which is the minimum requirement for an accessory structure.
Okay.
Then, my question is, it's too close to the thing. Did, one of the people that signed the letters saying that they were okay with this, did they have an okay from that person? That this new thing would be okay? Did I make myself clear?
I don't think so.
Did the person most affected by the three-foot-
Well, let's ask the applicant, if we don't mind deviating a little bit here. Sir, the people that are most affected, is all your neighbors in agreement?
Absolutely. They're 100% aware of the, if you call, if you want to call it illegal structures, which previously, about a month or so ago, got permitted on a separate permit. So we took the time, or they hired me, so to speak, to legalize it.
But this application is for a proposed accessory structure. This is, and Mr. Farlow, for your clarification, I think there was some issues on that site previous, but as I read this, this is proposed, it's not built. So it's not as a matter of getting caught, it's a matter of wanting to build it. Is that correct, sir?
Correct. The detached garage, the accessory structures are on a completely separate permit, which have been approved by the city Building Safety Department.
Right. Okay. And just for the sake of clarity, as I read this into the record, I believe that the reason for the denial is that it exceeds the allowable square footage, because they're requesting 1,048, where 1,011 is allowed. So by my calculation, it's 37 feet. You're asking for 37 square feet in addition to the size, and if it weren't for the 37-foot addition, we would likely be recommending approval. Is that correct?
There's also a setback.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Is it the setback issue?
There is, there are two issues. There is a setback issue, and then the building area issue. The building area, they do have a valid permit right now for a building addition to the main house. Once that is constructed and all final inspections are completed, the portion of this variance that applies to the building area will go away. However, that setback variance will still be present.
Okay. Thank you very much. And my only question, and maybe the Commissioners can help me, is what will this look like at the end of the day? Will there be any deterrent to the neighbors and the community? Thank you very much. Commissioners? Oh, ma'am, did you wish to speak on this matter?
My name is Glenda Torres, and I own the property at 5304 Patricia, and I agree with the other neighbors. I think they should have their variance and build their structure.
How far away are you from this?
Across the street and down one lot.
Okay.
And the pride of ownership at their home is incredible. I would only hope that one day my house could look as nice as theirs does.
Thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, comments?
In regard to the one question you had about what's the building going to look like, I stated it was going to be the same materials and colors as the main house.
Just for the record, all the new detached structure would match, you know, the existing stucco. The height limitation would not exceed the existing roof limitation of the existing house. As you can see here, on the elevations here, everything is to match. Materials and color scheme will match the existing side of the house. So to answer your question, at the end of the day, this will be a matching scheme of the house, except it's just detached.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Sanchez, not only did your clients not get caught, they actually corrected what had been done illegally before they got there. And I really appreciate that. They're trying to do things correctly. We have two structures that they've corrected so far. I understand, one of them is a storage unit, one of them is a barbecue. Is that correct, Mr. Sanchez?
Correct, yeah. Two structures that have been legalized.
And so, we're here now just on one more structure, and that is the garage, which, because of the placement of the property, we've got to give them some room to get back there behind the house a little bit, which forces it to be detached. Again, I appreciate what your clients have done here. I'm in support of this project, with the understanding that your clients are willing to meet with NARA on Tuesday, April 19th, just next week, and that will be before City Council. And you've already stated to me that they're willing to do that?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right, very good. You will have my support on this project.
Any further comments?
Just when you come back for the swimming pool, let's keep it a swimming pool and not an ocean.
All right, Mr. Chairman. With that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
All right. With regard to Item 24, VAR 40797, recommend approval subject to staff's conditions.
We have a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that has passed.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, this item will go before City Council on May the 18th.
Thank you very much. We move on to Agenda Item Number 25. That's a variance 41002. The applicant is SA Recycling, and the owner is 1701 Western Avenue LLC et al. And it is to add two feet of razor wire to an existing eight-foot-high perimeter wall at 1701 Western Avenue, and that's in an industrial zone in Ward 3. The staff is recommending approval. Can we have a report, please? Can we get a report from the staff, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is currently surrounded by an eight-foot-high steel wall. An additional two feet of razor wire is proposed on top of the existing wall, on three sides of the site, excluding the side adjacent to public right-of-way. Evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and that the site is located adjacent to a railroad corridor that allows increased access to the site, while limiting the ability to monitor that access from the public right-of-way, and has resulted in an ongoing issue with unauthorized site access and vandalism. Staff is recommending approval of the request. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for this item since publication.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, you wish to state your name and address for the record, and do you agree with the conditions, if there are any?
My name's Robin Robinson, 5850 North Nellis, North Las Vegas. What we're proposing to do is to add razor wire to the top of the current eight-foot permitted fence that is required for a recycling center. We are requesting the variance for just three sides, the north, south, and west side of the facility. The razor wire, to these three sides, will improve the security to our facility by adding a deterrent to those sides. We are not asking for a variance or to add the razor wire to the front side of our facility that faces Western Avenue. By improving the security for our facility itself, it's also going to improve the security for our neighbors, as well as the entire area, to act as a deterrent.
Excuse me, Chairman. For the record, we own property at 1821 Western, and I wanted to ask the city attorney if it would be okay if I voted on this item or not.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Commissioner, as long as this application does not affect you any differently than it affects the other people in this area, you are more than welcome to vote on this pursuant to Nevada law.
Okay. It doesn't affect me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Can we see those overheads again, or those photos that they had? Because some of that looks real nice. And then there was one, that looks nice, that looks nice, that. That does not look nice. I do not want anything looking like a prison down there. And razor wire, it just, it just has the wrong effect. If they put an electric line across the top of that fence, or get a junkyard dog or something like, there has to be another way other than razor wire. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
I had a question on this. With regards to the applicant, this is scrap metal. Do you, where do you get the scrap metal? Is this a drop-off recycling center?
Yes, we're open to the public, and it's mainly coming from the community itself, bringing in material from appliances, refrigerators, as well as non-fares material.
Okay. So if someone comes up with 100 feet of coiled copper, you'll buy it from them, right?
As long as we follow the scrap theft laws here in the state of Nevada.
Which?
Which we're in total compliance of. They, we have to take fingerprints of all applicants coming in. We have to photograph the material coming in. We have to photograph the individual bringing the material coming in, as well as we have to know where the material's coming from. If a material, if your material cost is valued more than $150, we'll have to pay you by check, so we can work with Metro on tracking payment of the material if it comes out, finds out later on that it might be stolen.
Okay. Because there's a lot of properties in this area that wind up missing air conditioners, missing copper. I mean, it's pervasive, and I'd hate to have to see us put razor wire around those facilities, but, and I'm not so sure I want to see us put razor wire around your facility to protect recycled metals, as opposed to the other businesses along this corridor.
What it really acts as is more of a deterrent, so that the person that is involved in the illegal activity does not participate in it. It also makes it so that these people do not come into the area for our neighbors, so that they do not also experience the same problem.
But every one of your, almost all the street faces, or all the property sites of this have overhead lines, significant overhead wire. If you're going to put two-foot coiled razor wire on there, what kind of safety issue does that create for Nevada Power, Centel, or whoever owns them these days, the cable, Cox, I guess the other ones?
To be able to put up the razor wire, we'll have to get full permits to put it up, and they'll go through all the agencies to allow us to put it up.
I just think as a community, there's better solutions to start protecting our properties than just how much razor wire we can put up along that rail corridor. Just-
Well, that's where the big problem is, that we have, and that whole area has, is the rail corridors. And we're trying to make it so that, we do have onsite security, we have, add a lighting facility, we also have probably 20-some surveillance cameras on the facility. And we're just asking for this here to make it so that it's more difficult for someone that would want to come in and do mischievous or illegal activities in the area.
Yeah, but understand what I'm getting at, is if everybody there wants to put razor wire around every property there, we wind up with the center core of Las Vegas that does, I mean, the only other place that looks like that is, you know, the temporary jail down on East Stewart. And it's not appropriate for the rest of the businesses.
Most businesses in that area already have razor wire around their facilities. I actually did a survey, I think it's over 20 of our neighbors have razor wire already up.
There's a list of somebody surrounding that do.
So I guess you would be in favor of us not having any codes against razor wire, and just say that whole area is an overlay district with razor wire everywhere?
Not at all, as long as everything is fully permitted and put up properly, and stays in good condition. I've seen razor wire just thrown up by individuals, and that is not installed properly.
All right. Anyone else have any comments on this matter? I'm not entirely clear now.
Yes, if I could, please. Just by way of history and background, a few meetings ago, we had a request from someone that was buying or had bought a warehouse that was going to use it for wine distribution, and perhaps a sales office. And they wanted to put razor wire up as part of their request. Does anybody remember that particular item, and where it was, and what the disposition was?
Mr. Chairman, through you. I believe that they were, those were actually two different items. There was the warehouse that was coming through as a wine distributor, and there was a separate application for a warehouse that was requesting a higher wall with razor wire on top.
And, well, okay, the one regarding the higher wall with the razor wire on top of it, what did we do with that, and where was it located? I remember it being right there next to the railroad. And I don't know whether we granted them the waiver or not.
Mr. Chairman, I vaguely remember this one, and I believe we did approve it, but we lowered it two feet than what they were requesting, because I think they were going, shooting for 12 feet on this one, and we asked them to drop it down to 10 feet. And if I remember correctly, they had the same issue. It was on that railroad corridor. And the other issue was the graffiti that was on that railroad corridor wall as well, which we made it a condition.
Yes, thank you very much.
So we approved it to 10 feet?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on this matter?
I would just say, I think we need to stay consistent on that. And the biggest problem we have here is that railroad corridor, and I completely sympathize with the applicant on this. Because of that issue, there's just really no way to provide security in there other than have to put the razor wire up there. And quite frankly, I believe, you know, along that line, it's a terrible state of affairs that we have to do this in this community. But I sincerely believe, along that railroad corridor, if there, you know, most of those property owners got together and put up the razor wire, it might provide security for all the adjoining parcels.
Thank you. Let me ask this quick question. We were shown a number of illustrations, a number of pictures on the screen, different heights, different colors, different sizes. And I know in the application that one of you are referring to, I think the issue was the height differences, which made it look peculiar. Has there ever been any thought to uniformity along this corridor, so you don't have one wall at one height, and the next parcel at a different height, one with razor wire, one not, one with chain link and wrought iron, and one not? I suspect that- I suspect that the majority of the people that are actually able to view the backsides of this are the hobos on the train, but, you know, I don't think it's that visible from folks driving through the community. But has there ever been any thought to uniformity? Mr. Rankin or Mr. Planning Director?
Let me jump in here if I might. One of our major concerns when we have requests such as this is what is the appearance from the street? And that's really where our concern lies, both with this application, with the previous one where we considered the razor wire. In this instance, they are proposing to put it along the side and the rear setback, which faces the railroad tracks. They are not putting it along the street side that faces Western Avenue, and so that's one of the reasons why we have recommended approval of it. In terms of having a consistent standard, obviously we do look to adjacent properties in terms of trying to have some general consistency among the properties. We have not as of yet established perhaps a standard fence requirement for our industrial properties. We do need to be mindful that, again, in an industrial area, we don't have quite the need for aesthetics as we do in other commercial areas. And so obviously, we do give some leeway there. One of the things that we have discussed, as you're aware, is looking at including a portion of our industrial areas within the Centennial Plan. We may look at additional standards when we get to that point, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments on this matter?
I do. I just want to say that we own the property at eighteen twenty-one Western, where we built four buildings. And at that time, it was consistent with the neighbors on both sides of us, the south and the north, that they had razor wire just in, on the back. So therefore, there was none on the sides, and there was none in the front. So I would support this wholeheartedly if your razor wire is just on the back for, for people to not get over, because I think putting it on the side just makes the corridor that's really starting to turn around and look nice if anybody's driven down there lately. I just think that the side corridor would make it look unappealing, where I believe the back end of it, where you want to put the razor wire, is not only important, it's imperative. So that's how I feel.
The applicant, you have a comment?
We could agree with that, but on the north side, there's that service road, which is just another, it just acts exactly like the railroad, so people get access. It's not, we're not butting right against somebody on the north side, there's a service road down there.
It's a utility service road.
Utility service road.
For railroad tracks that straddles the north side of the park.
Well, how about if, I'm sorry, this isn't my word, but it's my suggestion, is if tonight we think about agreeing with you on the backside, and then in one year, we'll do a recheck on it, and if you've had any problems, we'll add it. I don't believe you're going to have a problem. We've never had a problem, and we have, you know, we built those four buildings, and we've never had anybody coming in from the sides, and there's also an alleyway on the sides of my husband's buildings over there. So it would be my suggestion just to ask if we could have a one-year review, and if you're unhappy and you've had problems, then we'll change it, because razor wire can be put up at any time. So you'll see my support on the back, but you will not see my support on the side.
Anyone else? Did you want to comment on that, sir? I'm not sure if that...
If we only put razor wire on the backside, at least on the north side, it just takes somebody from the railroad to go two feet to one side and climb up over the fence. So the effect of putting the razor wire off the back side of the property is kind of a mute issue. We definitely would like to put it on the north side and the east side of the property, because those are the blind areas. The other part is adjacent to our neighbor, and I believe he actually has razor wire on that side. Except for where we followed the city's requirements, has established an eight-foot solid fence line.
Well, then you're going to win me over, because I know you need it, and I don't want you to stop your project because of razor wire. And unfortunately, the times are that such that we need to think this way, so you'll see my support, because you kind of talked me into it.
Thank you.
Any further comment, or maybe we can make a motion on the razor wire?
No other discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-five, variance forty-one zero zero two, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
We have a motion for approval on agenda item number twenty-five. Please cast your vote. And that has been approved. I do have one question before you leave. The folks that I see with the pallets and shopping carts, they're not coming to your facility, are they?
To be able to recycle, you have to be able to have a valid ID. Chances are that they do not have a driver's license.
Okay, but you don't take the wooden pallets?
Oh, no, no, we are scrap metal recycler.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you very much. We move on to agenda item number twenty-nine, which is a variance four-one-one-nine-seven. The applicant is Ovation Development, and the owner is Lone Mountain Apartments LLC, Lone Mountain Apartments One LLC, to allow fifty-six parking spaces where fifty-seven are required, the southwest corner of Rainbow Boulevard and Lone Mountain Road, and that's in C-one in Ward six. The staff is recommending approval. Related item is agenda item number thirty-four-one-zero-three-nine. It's a major amendment to a previously approved special use permit, SUP three-seven-six-oh-one, for a seventy-five-unit senior citizen apartment complex, where a hundred and fifty-two-unit senior citizen apartment complex was approved. And again, the staff is recommending approval on this. And the last related item is agenda item number thirty-one, which is the site development review, four-one-zero-four-three, and that's for a proposed three-story, seventy-five-unit senior citizen apartment complex, with waivers to allow a zero-foot-wide landscape buffer along portions of the south and east perimeters where six feet is required. And the staff is recommending approval of that as well. The staff, can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this project is being reduced from the original one-hundred-and-fifty-two-unit senior citizen apartment complex previously approved, which included this site and a parcel to the east of the subject site. Because the project is redesigned to function on a smaller, regularly-shaped site, parking variance, a perimeter landscape buffer waiver, and several exceptions have been requested, which staff is supporting. The complex as proposed is compatible with existing development in the area and remains aesthetically similar to what was previously approved. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much.
Please, please note, we do have a condition change to SDR four-one-zero-four-three. Change condition number four to read as follows. All developments shall be in conformance with the site plan and landscape plan, date-stamped zero-three-fifteen-eleven, and building elevations date-stamped zero-two-twenty-four-eleven, except as amended by conditions herein.
Thank you very much. The applicant, can you please state your name and address for the record, and whether or not you are in agreement with the recommendations for approval in these matters?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Pete Loss with Impulse Civil Engineering, six-twenty-five Denar Way, North Las Vegas, eight-nine-zero-three-one, representing the applicant. The project before you, you've already seen, the parcel to the right on what you're seeing on the screen was part of our original application. As you heard, we've reduced the project significantly, fifty percent reduction in number of units. Based on the size of this, of this new property and the shape of the property, our variance is for one parking space. The exceptions on the landscape buffer are specifically in the corners where the curved parking in the southeast touched the property. They're actually not touching, they're off the property, but that reduces the required landscape buffer. And then also where the throat opens up on the entry, on the main entry, we've had to reduce the landscape buffer in those locations. We do concur with staff's recommendations and findings, and I respectfully ask for your approval of this project.
Thank you very much. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this matter? Ms. Clark?
We had, we had, is it on? We had just a question.
We know who you are, but why don't you state your name for the record?
Yes, one-eight Clark for Charleston Neighborhood Preservation. We were questioning why, why this was reduced in size, by fifty percent. And, and he did make a statement, but we didn't...
Just, just a moment, just a moment.
And, and so we would just like to have that answered.
Okay, so your question is why was the original, why was the original project reduced?
Four-hundred-and-fifty, and why is it now seventy-five?
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead and answer.
Yes, sir. Originally, the property, the project encompassed both of these parcels. This property owner backed out, and so now we're, we only have that to work with.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners? Anyone have any thoughts, motion, ready for a motion? Staff's recommending approval. You agree, we have a change to condition number four. You've read the conditions, you agree to the conditions, you agree to the change to condition four, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Let's get a motion.
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chair, starting with item number twenty-nine, VAR four-one-one-nine-seven, move for approval, subject to staff's conditions.
We have a motion for approval on agenda item number twenty-nine. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Agenda item number thirty?
Item number thirty, SUP four-one-zero-three-nine, recommend approval, subject to staff's conditions.
Recommendation for approval, we have a motion, please cast your vote. And that passes, and agenda item number thirty-one.
Item number thirty-one, SDR four-one-zero-four-three, move for approval, subject to staff's conditions and the amended condition, which I believe is number four.
We have a motion for approval with the condition amendment, condition four. Motion for approval, a yes vote is for approval, please cast your vote. And that is approved.
Mr. Chairman, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you very much. We move on to agenda item number thirty-two. That's a special use permit, four-oh-eight-four-three. It's a public hearing, and the applicant and the owner is Three Bs Inc., for a proposed car wash, full service, at eight-sixty West Charleston Boulevard. That's in C-one in Ward two. The staff is recommending approval. And a related item, thirty-three, site development review, four-oh-eight-three-six. That's a site development plan review related to the above stated special use permit. And the same applicant, Three Bs Inc., and it's for proposed one-thousand-square-foot car wash, full-service facility. Once again, the staff is recommending approval. Staff, can we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed car wash will be placed on the south side of an existing convenience store located within a larger commercial subdivision. It is located away from the public right of way, approximately four-hundred feet from adjacent residentially zoned property to the south, and is screened by an intervening building. As the use meets all minimum requirements of Title nineteen and all special use permit requirements, and the audiovisual impacts of the use on adjacent residential properties will be minimized by the location and an intervening structure, staff recommends approval with conditions. If denied, the site will remain as it is. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for this item since publication.
Thank you very much. Applicant, can you state your name and address for the record?
Rudy Starks with RSJ Architecture, six-zero-six-nine South Forte Patti Road. We have reviewed staff conditions and agree with them, and seek your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this matter, please come forward. No, thank you very much. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no comments, I'll make a motion for approval, subject to all staff's, as if approved conditions.
Very good. Motion for approval on agenda item number thirty, thirty-two. Please cast your vote. And that is approved. Agenda item number thirty-three, related?
Motion for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that too is approved.
Mr. Chairman, these items will go forward to City Council on May the eighteenth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We move on to agenda item number thirty-four. That's a special use permit, four-one-zero-three-six. The applicant is Daniel Coughlin, and the owner is Tibrio Two LLC, and that's for proposed one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-three-square-foot Tavern Limited Establishment in five-twenty-three Fremont Street, and that's general commercial, and that's in Ward five. The staff is recommending approval. Staff, can we get a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed Tavern Limited Establishment is located within the Fremont East District of the downtown Centennial Plan area, the downtown entertainment overlay district, and it complies with Title nineteen-oh-four minimum special use permit requirements. It can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with surrounding land uses, and staff is recommending approval with conditions. Please note that there is an additional letter of protest for this item since publication.
Thank you very much. Applicant, can you state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Sean Mitchell, Baker Construction, fifty-seven-twenty Arville, here on behalf of the applicant, Le Thai LLC, members Daniel Coughlin and attorney, Pooey Primserit. We've reviewed staff's recommendations for approval and all the conditions, and we have no concerns at this time.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this matter, please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. I'm glad to see that the applicants are going to put some money and effort in this, and I wish them luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
I'd like you to provide the opportunity to give us a brief commercial message. What type of facility are you putting in? Is it a themed type of facility? How's your outdoor seating area going to be? What's it going to look like?
Right now, we're going through kind of the cost analysis also with the VIP program, seeing what our opportunities are for there, in terms of what you're talking about, the look for the front facade. It will be a Thai restaurant. We're going for a Tavern Limited license, reason being is we have a great sort of outdoor space back there, and Mr. Coughlin would like to have a, almost like an Asian-style beer garden in back, in conjunction with his Thai restaurant.
Thank you.
And I might just comment on this as well. I am so impressed with what's going on on the East Fremont Entertainment District Corridor. At any given day, you can go down to the Beat, and it's just been an incredible success story. Emergency Arts, all the great artists and the talent in there, the filmmakers, it's pretty incredible. The Insert Coins will be opening, I think, in the next week. Chris Laporte and his team, I took the opportunity to poke my head in the other night, and it's just going to blow the socks off of folks down there. It's a whole demographic, I don't understand it, but all I know is it's pretty cool. You got Next to You, Don't Tell Mama, and the Beauty Bar in Griffith, and around the corner of the DCR, and Papa Joe's, and, I mean, the whole place is just coming alive. You got the Vanguard, and you go down there on a weekend, there's lines at the door. People from the Strip are being conveyed northward. The blogs are all talking about Come Downtown. You know, the casinos are hopping, and the venues in there, some of the restaurants just are becoming incredible. And it's the little guys like you, this little organic restaurants and nightclubs and the venues, that are creating an opportunity that has incredible economic impact. It creates jobs, people with jobs buy houses, and, you know, kumbaya. So my hat's off to you guys, and I wish you all the success in the world.
Thank you.
Get a motion, maybe?
Mr. Chairman, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of item thirty-four, SUP four-one-zero-three-six, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Very good, thank you. Good luck to you gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Our next item is Agenda Item Number 35. That's special use permit, 41046. The applicant is Downtown Guitar Bar LLC, the owner Third and Charleston LLC. It's for an urban lounge in an existing antique collectible store, 1106 South 3rd Street, C2, and that's in Ward Three. The staff is recommending approval. Can we get a report from the staff, please?
Mr. Chairman, before you go any further, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as I own property within the notice area.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this project, this location will continue with retail operations during daytime hours. The applicant is seeking approval of a special use permit to operate the proposed urban lounge during the evening hours, at which time no minors would be permitted within the establishment. The proposed use meets all minimum requirements for an urban lounge and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding land uses. Staff recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional protests since publication.
Thank you very much. Applicant, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Erica Wright of the law firm of Miller and Wright, 618 South 7th Street. And I'm here on behalf of the owner and applicant. I have with me, the applicant is Alicia Carter of 1106 South 3rd Street.
And you've reviewed the report, and you agree to all the conditions?
Yes, we have reviewed that. We agree to all the conditions and have no additional changes to this.
Do you want to state anything about the business and what you intend to do?
Absolutely. Currently, the space is being used as a vintage guitar shop where there are vintage guitars for sale. They also do guitar repair, guitar lessons. And their plan for the property now is, in the evenings, to actually turn that into a great urban lounge area. What's so fabulous about the space is they have room for about 20 lounge seats right there when you walk in. It's got this great, really great vibe, and it really goes with, as you were talking about with the previous applicants, all the revitalization that's going on downtown, particularly in 18B. And they've gotten great traffic on First Fridays, there's huge interest, and it's really the goal of the applicant to help bring that section of 18B alive with an urban lounge.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Comments, motion?
There's no questions, I'm ready to make a motion, but I would like to comment on the creative use of this parcel. I'm seeing more and more of this type of approach. I had dinner the other evening in Reno in a flower shop that during the day was a flower shop, and in the evening it was a real nice Italian restaurant. And there was a nice complimentary activities going on. You know, you're not going to sell too many flowers at night, and you're not going to sell a whole lot of spaghetti during the morning. So it was a great idea, and I think it's really creative, and you need to be applauded for your approach to this. So having said that, in regards to Item Number 35, I would make a, Item Number 35, Special Use Permit 41046, make a motion for approval subject to all staff's conditions.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that has been approved, with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. And I would, just in keeping with my comments on the last, between the Bar Bistro and my friends from Artifice across the street, now the Guitar Bar, and with Sam Cherry's opening his urban lounge within the next few weeks, you're going to have, I think, a great success. And just a plug for the city, you know, much of what I think probably inspired you, I know it inspired Artifice and Sam Cherry, and probably Wes was the instigator of it, they convinced the mayor to eliminate the licensing fees for urban lounges for a two-year period. It's inspired four new businesses. Those four new businesses are going to create jobs, people with jobs buy houses, kumbaya. So thank you very much, and welcome to 18B, and wish you lots and lots of luck.
Thank you so much.
We move on to Agenda Item Number 36, SDR 41049. The applicant owner is 1015 Centennial LLC. It's a major amendment to an approved site development plan review, SDR 27051, for proposed 8,775 square foot auto repair garage minor approximately 230 feet north of Deer Springs Way, and it's adjacent to the west side of Durango Drive in Town Center. Zone GCTC, General Commercial Town Center, is the land use designation, and that's in Ward Six. The staff is recommending approval. Can we get a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as the property owner does have an obligation on some fees that I'm owed, so I'm abstaining.
Okay, please note that Commissioner Truesdale will be abstaining. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed development is consistent with Town Center development standards and the previously approved waivers, which were approved as part of Site Development Plan Review 27051. Staff recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional protests since publication.
Thank you. Mr. Gronauer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Bob Gronauer, 8345 West Sunset Road, representing the applicant and property owner in this matter. We'd ask you to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Very good. This is advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Ms. Clark?
Yes, Juanita Clark, on behalf of Trust and Neighborhood Preservation. We are so excited with Councilman Ross being eager, it looks like, with the recommendation of approval, to have such a facility, such a service offered in his ward. Being from another area, we've had a little bit of a challenge, we thought, in having such facilities in our ward. And because the truth is, we, most of us really drive vehicles, and those vehicles do have a manner of breaking down occasionally. And so if there's nothing in the neighborhood, no service available to repair that vehicle, it's, it just doesn't match with the neighborhood concept in our thinking, anyway. And so we really want to commend the business for obviously meeting the criteria that needed, and the councilperson for recognizing that something like this is important for the residents of the ward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I wasn't paying attention. This is all inside, right? There's no outside?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if there are no follow-up questions, I'm going to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
We have a motion for approval of Agenda Item Number 36. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining on that matter.
Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to City Council on May the 18th.
Thank you very much. Our last item on the agenda is director's business. It is a text amendment, TXT 41185. The applicant and the owner is the City of Las Vegas, and its discussion and possible action to amend Table One of Town Center Development Standards to establish regulations, applicable zoning districts, and requirements for the auto sales showroom use. The staff is recommending approval, and if you could please enlighten us.
Mr. Chairman, previously, the Planning Commission and City Council approved changes to Title 19 to allow the showroom use as a permitted use in C2, CM, and as a special use permit in C1 and CPP business parks. This would add the same use to the Town Center to allow it as a permitted use in the general commercial land use designation and require a special use permit in the general, or in the service commercial land use designation.
Thank you very much. Anyone wish to speak on this? I don't know whether it's a public hearing, but I might ask if anyone wishes to speak. I see none, so I'll open and close the public hearing. Commissioners? Do you have any thoughts?
No discussion on the item necessary. I guess I'd make a motion in regards to Item Number 37, Text Amendment 41185, make a recommendation for approval.
We have a recommendation for approval. A yes vote would be for approval of the item. Have everyone voting? And that passes.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you very much. The last portion of the agenda is citizens' participation. Citizens' public comments during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Would anyone wish to speak in this portion of the agenda this evening? Are you speaking here this evening?
Yes.
Please step forward and give your name and address for the record.
Hello? All right, my name's Robert Maxey, and I am, I'm a student at UNLV, and I'm kind of here on a leadership class to learn about the commission and stuff. And so I actually learned a lot. I didn't know anything about zoning until I came in here, and while I was here, I was kind of Googling it and paying attention to what you guys were saying and voting on and how that was going. But when you were talking to the Boy Scout troop, you did mention something, and this is probably the only question I'll ask, but you guys, it was mentioned that you were the keepers of the city's master plan, and I don't know if that was like a metaphorical term, if like, or if there's actually a master plan for the city, like, oh, the city should be built this way, or if it's more like, oh, we think this city should be built in a manner that promotes business, you know? And I guess that's all I have to say.
Mr. Planning Director?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The city's master plan is an actual adopted document that has been adopted by the City Council upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And if you'd like, I'd be happy to meet with you afterwards. I'll give you the website where it's located, and if you'd like to make an appointment, we could even walk you through what the master plan contains.
Yeah, that'd be great.
The force is with us. Anyone else wish to speak of this portion of the agenda? Ms. Clark?
Yes, I got stuck down at the State Building. And so I missed, we missed some comment time that we wanted to, so is it all right if I comment on Agenda Items previous to, which were passed, one motion, one vote? Or not? Okay, thank you. Okay. Regarding the wording in eight and nine and 10, and we have mentioned this at City Council a couple of times, and nothing has happened, and probably nothing will happen now either. But we did, and all we did was comment on it. So we didn't give a proposal, but we would ask for a wording change for planning to do when they put their, when they put their feet and talk about the item. For instance, Item Eight, we would propose that they would, and I'll start with the second line there, request for a special use permit for a proposed tavern limited establishment of 8,763 square feet. In other words, putting the footage after the establishment or the facility or whatever. And so the same thing with Number Nine. Instead of saying a special use permit for a 661 square foot massage establishment, which we took to mean would be only the massage for square feet, to again say that, a use permit for a massage establishment of 661 square feet. And the same thing then with 10 also. And with any other items to move those footage, footages after, after the business. So Number 10 would be a proposed beer wine cooler on sale establishment with a waiver to allow, oh, it would be of, of 2,946 square feet. And of course, we would have definitely spoke against that waiver. And so, you know, I was, I came in the last part there where we were all concerned about waivers and zoning and all this type of thing, and here, and here we're offering waivers close to parks. Item 12, this was especially provoking because of the statement that this, oh, was to be, was to be a place where there would be a lot of things in between. I can't remember the term that was used in the backup materials, but it would be, there would be a drainage, there's drainage, there's also a wall, and I guess some other buildings. So nobody would be able to drive through there, and actually, this is by a park. And so probably the children's park, nobody would be driving. And yet, this is very attractive to have drainage areas and buildings to hide behind and different things like that. And we know, we're aware that, we're sure that this has already been approved, but we're just, we would just like to give you pause to think about that, about how attractive that could be for children to run down into that area and to have those things to hide behind, walk under, walk through if there is drainage, walk through the water, whatever. And so, and so we would just like for some, maybe some other things to be added to that.
Anything further, Ms. Clark?
You know what? And I apologize for that, because it's item, that was Item 17. I apologize, that was a different item completely. It was obeyed, okay. Thank you, Councilman Goyens, Commissioner Goyens, appreciate that. And thank you so much for-
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You'll have the opportunity to come back and speak on those matters then. Anyone else wish to speak to this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.